The Board of Trustees for Pasadena Area Community College, please come to order. Ms. Thompson, roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Waugh?
Here.
Dr. Mann?
Present.
Dr. Fellow?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Dr. Selvage?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Ms. Cooper, please tell us what's on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you, President Brown. For closed session tonight, we have collective bargaining with PCCFA, lead negotiator, Mr. Bruce Barsuk, Government Code Section 5495-7.6. We also have collective bargaining with PCCFT, CSEA, and POA, lead negotiator myself, Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Negotiation with unrepresented employees, both management association and confidential officials, designated negotiator, Dr. Miller, Government Code Section 5495-7.9A, and a public employee appointment, project coordinator, economic and workforce development, and that's Government Code Section 5495-7.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board on any of the items for closed session? If not, we will adjourn to closed session at this time. Ms. Cooper, please tell us what transpired, if there's any reportable action.
There was no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Justee Fellow, could you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Please place your hand before your heart and be thereafter me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome each of you to our trustee meeting for tonight, and we will begin with recognition.
I do not have anyone to recognize this evening.
Okay, so now we will turn to public comment, and I would like to read the following. Notice, members of the public may request the opportunity to address the board regarding any item on the agenda. To do so, please complete a request to address the Board of Trustees form and give the board's secretary, which is right over there, prior to the beginning of the meeting. No public comment cards will be accepted after the start of the meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. Total audience participation on any agenda item is limited to 30 minutes. Thank you. Do we have any?
Yes, we have one person who wishes to address an item not on the agenda, Margaret Castro. And Ms. Castro, I will warn you when your time is almost up.
Thank you. Good evening, members. My name is Margaret Castro, and I am a returning student to this college. There are a couple of issues that I need to address to this board. One has been that I have petitioned to have a grade changed. It has taken two months for me to get an appointment with the professor and with the dean to get this grade changed, or at least to even discuss it. As of yesterday, I've only been able to review the test, my final, and nothing has happened so far. This has been over two months. As of December 19th, I petitioned for this. I emailed Dr. Miller about this, and all I received back was that, "Good luck, hope you find another college." I emailed again yesterday, and so far I have not had any response. One of the reasons why I feel that there is a problem, and I believe that I have been labeled a problem student in the psych department. I have had four instructors, and out of these four, three of them have created a problem. One, I even filed a complaint because of his inappropriate behavior in class. And because of that, I feel that this grade has been one of those issues that has not been resolved. My second issue is that I have had a problem with the financial aid department. Because I received this grade that I'm disputing, financial aid did not tell me that I was going to be disqualified. And it wasn't until three weeks into the semester, which means that if I had dropped a class, I would receive another W or two Ws for the classes that I'm taking.
Your time is almost up.
So because of that, this has created a financial hardship. And if I had been told ahead of time that this was the case, I would have had an opportunity to drop my classes and to seek education later on. And so for that reason, I've come, and I need this addressed, this issue addressed. And I have emails and my petitions available for your request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. Administration, did you want to say anything?
Yes, well, first of all, Ms. Castro, we're sorry for the concerns and the issues that you're having. I think it's important for the board and public to know that we've been taking this matter very seriously. Dr. Levo and Dr. Bell have been actively engaged from both the student affairs and the academic affairs side, and they continue to work on this issue, which has been ongoing for quite a while now. So I think I'll just leave it at that and just let the board know that it's not something that we are ignoring and that we are working towards resolution in whatever form that takes. And I believe, Dr. Bell, you would confirm that this is a high priority for you as well.
I absolutely do confirm that. Dr. Miller and Ms. Castro, again, let me add to Dr. Miller's extension of an apology for this. I was not aware that you had not been contacted by either the faculty member and/or the dean. I will personally check with those two individuals tomorrow and make sure that they get in contact with you to follow up.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our minutes from February the 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion from who?
Dr. Fellow.
Dr. Fellow and a second by Ms. Waugh. Do we have any corrections? Okay, so advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay, so we have six ayes and one abstention, and just with advisory vote. Okay, so at this time, we'll turn to our consent items. We have one consent item that has been revised. I think that is consent number 43B, 5B, I'm sorry. 145B, and we have a consent number 76P, which happens to be the employment of an economic and workforce development employee. So do I have a motion to approve the consent items, or is there anyone that we wish to take on separately?
I motion approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Juan and a second by Dr. Fellow. Any discussion, question? If not, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Motion carries unanimously. Hey, we're moving through this. Okay, so now we will turn to action items, and I would like to invite Dr. Nicholson to the stadium, to the stadium, to the podium. Yeah, we need to be in the stadium right now. Thank you, Dr. Nicholson, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And please tell us what's going on.
Thank you, President Brown. I have an update, and also I need some clarification on a couple of questions. The update, as you know, the screening process ended, well, I'm sorry, the application process deadline was February 12th. We ask that all candidates interested in being considered for first reading submit their materials by that date. At the same time, this position is open until filled. And so we did receive 51 applications. The committee, the screening committee, received an email, an electronic delivery of those materials yesterday, and they have a deadline to review those materials by February 27th. The committee will meet on March the 2nd, that's a Monday, to review their screening and to determine who will be invited for interviews with the board. What I need from you tonight is the actual date. We, I guess Stan Artiberry, Ralph Anderson, and Associates provided you with a timeline of interviews, and that timeline included March 17th through March 20th. However, we're now at a point where we really do need to know what date the board is able to conduct those interviews, and so that's one of the questions. The other has to do with whether or not there will be any other evaluation materials or evaluations that the board would like to see, and you can give us that information later. We also need to confirm the dates for the actual on-campus visit of the final candidates. And so those are the important dates that I need confirmation on with you, from you tonight.
Thank you. So let's just do this now. Anyone have any questions? Because I have in front of me a list of dates that most of the trustees are able to interview the candidates, and it appears that Friday, we can have all except for one trustee. Now, could you please explain to me if a trustee is not able to interview a candidate, are they allowed to participate at all or not? Just, could you explain that?
I would strongly recommend that all trustees be available if they are, if you're wanting to provide input in this process. If a trustee cannot be available, I would suggest we pick a day where, that's convenient for all.
So so far, I do not have a day where all trustees are available. So the problem that I'm having is trustee, let's see here, on Friday, Saturday, everyone is available.
Saturday the what?
Saturday the 21st, we're all available. So that's one day, but we need more than one day. So Friday, we are all available except for one.
Yep, please, thank you.
So are you able to do anything for that, Dr. Fellow, or not?
You know, if we start later, I have a meeting, I'm on a board.
What time can you be here?
1:00.
Because we can start at 10, because trustee Martin already told me he has to be here after 10. So we could come after.
1:00. Let me check, I'll see if I can come earlier. It's just a set meeting that I'm on a board the president has appointed me to, that I have to be there. But let me see if I could do without it, but.
So then, why don't we then, playing with that, then would it be safe to say we could start maybe about noon? Would that be okay?
Are you available?
Noon would be better. I'll try to be here by noon.
Okay.
There's a lot of ifs, because.
I understand.
It's my role on the board.
The one other thing, too, to consider is that we, at this point, don't know how many applicants. And if we need the day and a half, if we only need it one day, we could do it all on Saturday. But if we needed more than that, then Friday afternoon could be the other opportunity.
Okay, go ahead.
And depending on how many we had, we might be able to wait till two to start, or we might be able to accommodate that, right?
Exactly.
I'm in here, what did you say?
I said, if depending on how many we have, we might be able to start later on Friday, but at least we know, maybe noon if possible.
Okay, so I think we got Friday and Saturday. It's just a matter of what time on Friday. Let's just say noon on Friday.
Okay.
Friday, the 20th. Did someone have something?
How late are we going to be here on Friday? I mean, that's starting at noon time, are we going to go to 6:00, 8:00, 10:00? Yeah, well, how much time do we need to do this?
Well, depending on the candidates, I think we've allowed it, based on discussion with you, an hour and a half per candidate. And so if you start, and depending on how many you're actually going to be recommended for interview, you may not be, you may not be here that late on Friday. My suggestion would be to fill in Saturday first, and if we have more that need to be interviewed, based on the committee's recommendation, then Friday would be those that would actually be interviewed. Now, Friday, you could be out by 5, 6:00. I would say not later than that.
Okay, any other question? Yes, trustee.
All right, this would be the first interview of any of the candidates, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other question I've got, the screening committee members received all the materials that were submitted by each one of, each of the 51 candidates by email yesterday. That was probably a big attachment, I expect.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you said on the 27th, the individual committee members are supposed to have gone through all of those applications. Now, when is the committee going to meet and make some decision?
March 2nd.
Oh, okay, so 3/2, okay, March 2nd. That's their meeting when, having gone through them all by the 27th, they'll convene. Will there be anything happening between the 27th and the 2nd?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other question? Okay, so then we'll turn to the forum, right?
Well, wait, wait, wait. Wouldn't it make a whole lot more sense, a whole lot more sense to take a full day, meet with people, then determine whether we need a second day, rather than to start out noon time on Friday and say, "Well, we know we're going to have to go over Saturday"? I mean, are these the only dates we can find?
Well, this is based on the board's availability.
I know that.
I'm hearing that.
I'm well aware of that, but there must be other dates that the board members can be available for this purpose.
You need to let us know.
We do have a time, we are in a time schedule, and if we, we've had these dates from day one, so that this week has been set aside. So I hate that everyone is not available, but we have to do the best we can.
Well, are there other days that week where everybody could be available, start to start earlier?
I'm not sure.
We have to go to Friday and Saturday? I mean, this is, I think we're walking into a potential problem here, and we, why is it avoided now?
Justie, well, trustee Thompson, we had Monday, the 17th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Those were the dates.
Okay.
An entire week.
All right.
People have obligations, and this is the best we could do. Trustee Mann?
Maybe people could maybe reconsider. I agree with Mr. Thompson, it'd be much better if we could do this earlier, earlier in the week, but I looked at the list, people just aren't, aren't available. I have, of course, it's easy for me because I'm retired. I have agreed to, you know, just to reschedule anything during those, during those days. And I think this is the most important thing the board does, and if, and if people can be available, then maybe we could do it, but we need to do it quickly, because she needs to know when we're going to have these interviews.
Mr. President, I think, I think Dr. Nicholson pointed out that she's going to try to do most of it on Saturday, and I think.
That's correct.
If she can do that, would be fine. If we have to have a few on Friday, I think we can get it over quickly.
Right.
I think last time, we spent one day, so I, I would proceed to Saturday and then move some, a few to Friday if you need to.
We have a board meeting scheduled for the 18th that evening. Can people make, everybody make the rest of that day?
Except, well, some people do work.
Oh, I'm one of those.
And I can't just cancel classes. I can do Wednesday after 1:00.
So I really don't want us to, this, this information has been floated around all week. So I think, go ahead, trustee Martin.
Well, I have a question. The goal of the trustees at this meeting is to, I'm trying to get straight, it's, are we trying to get down to a certain number, or are we trying to get down to, because there's campus interviews and things after that, correct?
We would like every trustee to participate.
No, I know, I meant the goal when we're all together. When we, we see all these interviews, are we trying to get down to two finalists, three finalists, one finalist?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so my only comment is, I think we're going to be fine for getting the interviews in. It's the discussion time afterwards where we may need to schedule a backup day. That's what I would think, from previous times through this.
Justie Lewis?
If I was hearing it correctly, I think it may be smarter to just leave it at Saturday than when you find out how many candidates you actually have. If you end up with three, you only need the Saturday, so why don't, why don't we just say the Saturday, and then when we find out how many there are, talk about it.
Go ahead, Dr. Mann.
Maybe we should, maybe we should schedule it in a hotel, so if we could go all night, we can all take a nap and come, and come back. Actually, I do agree, there is, the discussion afterwards is, you know, is, is important, but I remember the last time, we discussed till about midnight, and I think we should be.
I don't know, last time, we were very, one day.
Time, but before last, we discussed them and I think.
We did pretty well last time.
So, go ahead.
Well, I have a question then on the timing of the schedule. So we get the interviews in, and the board has a discussion, and we don't come to a resolution, it's getting laid on Saturday.
Then at that point, we will have to schedule another day to finish those deliberations, yes.
We're going to have to schedule another day just for deliberations, right? And I don't know when, what's the next point on the, that would be when whoever we select comes for interviews, correct? And when is that?
Right, the, the next point.
I mean, comes for campus visits.
Right, that would be April 6th through, I think it's the 12th.
Okay, so if.
It would be the week of April 6th, when you would have your campus forum.
Okay, so if we stall out on Saturday, the 21st, the campus visits aren't for another two weeks, we could reschedule a day of, you know, just deliberations the following week.
Yeah.
Sometime between, so if anything, I think we're fine with the Friday and the Saturday. What we may want to do is say Wednesday, the 25th, at 6:00 is a backup deliberation meeting in case, or Monday, or maybe we'll just bang through our calendars on Saturday if it gets too late.
Yeah.
But I think that's the, I think Friday, Saturday's fine for interviews.
Me, too.
It's the, it's the deliberation if it gets.
And we would, I would recommend that the deliberations, if it's not on Saturday, be as soon as possible, so that our memories will be intact, and also it'll give the candidate, the final candidates, an opportunity to make any kind of travel arrangements to, to, to be here for that forum, depending on what day we select for the forums.
Okay, so let's just settle that we will be doing Friday and Saturday, and starting at noon on Friday. I think, Ms. Thompson, you already have the venue, correct? Thank you. So now, let's go to the other, which is the, I hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, you may want, we may want, even if there's only a minimal number of candidates, it may be advantageous to start Friday to allow more deliberation time on Saturday.
At noon.
Okay.
At noon?
Okay.
Okay, now that we have that, all members in line, Friday at noon. Okay, so now, let's do the date for the forum, community forum. We have here, I have several. Now, is this something that you will recommend all trustees attend, or what is your recommendation on that?
The, the, I would recommend that at least you have one trustee or more. The process that, that I think will work is that we, first of all, for, for each person, maybe one, maybe two, that they would start the forum with an introductory statement, two to three minutes. We would ask that the community, campus community and constituent groups provide questions in advance. It takes up less time during the process, and also have cards available at the, at the forum, so that individuals in the audience who didn't have an opportunity to provide a question in advance could also provide questions. And that the, either the president of the academic senate or the president of the classified senate read those questions, and, and at the end of the process, give the candidate an opportunity to give a summary of their background, et cetera. And then we would select, we would collect the evaluation forms, summarize those forms for the board, and give those forms, as well as a summary, to the board members, so that you have that information as well. And so I would think that having that forum, it doesn't require that the entire board be there, but, but there is, as you, as you could have said, I don't know if you reviewed the outline, that that day does have in the schedule an evening forum, which is another, I think you've agreed that you would have an evening forum for committee, community members in the community, and that there was a dinner or something proposed with the board. And so I would suggest that the board members be present for that, for the, for the evening meal, if there is such one, with the candidate.
Yeah, we usually do that.
Any other question? Yes.
I think it's really, I think it's really important that when we're bringing these people to campus, I mean, we're trying to sell the campus, you know, it's not, it's a two-way thing, and so I think it's very gracious if there's a board member present.
Yes.
Maybe someone there in the morning, someone there in the afternoon. I assume someone will be assigned to kind of escort the person around, a staff member. But I think it's very nice if the board can find the time, people can come, and, and so that they, people really feel like they're wanted. And I would hope the community would, campus community would go all out to make whoever comes feel wanted, but, but I think to not see the board until that evening would not be a good thing, so I think we should decide who's, you know, we can just take turns, see who's available, and to, I think it's important to have someone to greet them and someone there at each of the forums.
So basically what I have, anyone have another question? Go ahead, doctor.
Well, I agree with Dr. Mann on that. The last time, we really made a special effort to, at least the final two candidates, take them out to meet the community. We had lunch for them over at one of the restaurants close by and all of that, and I would hope we would do something similar to that this time around. A question I have, and I don't know if it's appropriate, Ms. Cooper, to raise this now or if we have to try to address this at our retreat coming up on Saturday, but that's the role of the, of the search committee or the screening committee, because I think some new information has become available on that, and I know at least my member has resigned because of the fact that all he's going to be asked to do is read about 450 pieces of paper and never eyeball a candidate, whatever, whereas the last time around, they did interview candidates face to face, and so I'd like to see that addressed, because I think that's information that we ought to take seriously and decide what to do with it. I think, can we have to do this, what, make a motion, do it at a retreat? Is that what we have to do, or how do we handle this?
Well, you would be addressing amendment of the existing bylaw, and that would require a specifically agendized matter in open session, so that the public has noticed that the board is considering amending one of its bylaws.
Okay.
So the answer is no.
What's the, then, at some point this evening, is we have to, what, make a motion, have it put on the retreat agenda? Is that the procedure?
Well, right now, it's too late, actually, to agendize it for the retreat, because we're past 72 hours.
We are?
I think so.
Yes.
Aren't we?
Oh, okay, well.
Okay, any other question?
Well, I still want to know, I mean, what's the procedure if we want to get this on an agenda so that we can address it? I mean, in my view, we're really missing an opportunity. We got very, very competent people on that search committee, and they're not being taken advantage of in terms of their competence and all of that. And so it bothers me that we're just kind of proceeding ahead here and not really being willing to step back and at least address the question once again. If we don't change our mind, then fine, we don't change our mind, but at least I think we ought to have a thoughtful discussion of it and then decide how we want to proceed.
The, the only procedure that would be available? The, the only procedure that would be available, the procedure would be if the board were to choose to set a special meeting at the same time as the retreat, and set that as the topic.
Go ahead, Dr. Mann.
Well, but if we did that, then we would have to, you know, and I'm saying that this isn't a good reason, I might want to make two points. First of all, the schedule that we're proceeding, then we would have to have, put in a whole another line of interviews, and bring the people in at a completely different time. And secondly, we did discuss the procedures three or four times, and I think there was ample time for anyone who was interested in that. I, you know, I, our procedure says screening committee, screening committee. Trustee Wall raised this at the very first time we looked at it. I invited people, if anyone had any concerns or questions, to get in touch with me. We, we looked at it again, and no one raised it. Not that, you know, so I think it, we, we'll have to redo this entire schedule, not that that's the reason we shouldn't do it, if we're now going to ask the members of the screening committee to, to interview.
So we will, any other, go ahead, Dr. Salvich.
I think that the, the idea that we might get as few as three people recommended for interviews from the screening committee, when we've got 51 applications, would really seem to me almost as if the finalists are being selected without any interview of any applicant being conducted. If we receive, you know, five names, or seven names of people that are the frontrunners in the absence of an interview, that would be more palatable to me. And if I'm telegraphing, you know, what I think the screening committee ought to do, fine. But I think just receiving as few as three names out of a pool of 51, without a single interview being conducted, really amounts to the finalists being selected without anybody having been talked to.
Where did you get three?
Well, people have talked about that.
Minimum of three.
That's the minimum, it's the minimum.
Okay, if we get the minimum.
Well, we don't, we're not expecting the minimum.
Yeah. If we get the minimum, to me, it's gonna look as if the finalists have been selected without a single person being interviewed.
Any other question?
Is not good.
So, the bylaw that we adopted, I think it was on October 14th?
Something like that.
We just revised it, and it clearly said that we will have a screening process. And there were discussion as to why we did not want our committee screening them. It was because we did not want folks developing their preconceived or like to certain candidates, and then once they come to, the trustees, and we were not in tune with their selection, we have problems. Apparently, this has happened before, and this is one of the reasons why the policy or the bylaw was changed. As to date, I don't really, I'm happy with the process. So I am not sure if there's room for any more discussion about that, is there?
You never suffer from more discussion, you can often suffer from less discussion, but there is no negative to having more conversation, thoughtful conversation, looking at new facts. The fact that my guy has resigned, Ross's is unhappy, as I understand it, Tony's guy is not very happy with the process. I think this is information we ought to bring out, look at it honestly, thoughtfully, and make a decision. But why just try to ignore it, I think is the wrong approach to make. We're making perhaps the most important decision we'll be making for this college for the next four, eight, whatever number of years. And I don't see why we want to rush through it. Let's step back, take more time, be thoughtful about it. If we don't change our policy or our bylaw, then so be it. But at least, we will have the chance to have a thoughtful, up-to-date, current discussion about the facts, and then make a decision based on that. I don't see the downside to that.
Okay, trustee Wall.
Well, as has been pointed out, in October, when that, the bylaw was reviewed, I did ask extensive questions about this, and, and everyone seemed to think that it was okay that, that we not have a screening committee, that we have a screening committee and not an interview committee of the campus. And there were a number of reasons that were posed. I think trustee Martin gave some very good reasons why in the past, historically, that has not worked out well, and that this was the best method. So I went ahead, and I went along with that, and I could certainly see some wisdom to that. You know, I've seen things work, and, and I've seen things work both ways, where you can have a lot of candidates, and maybe they get screened ahead of time. But I did think that the arguments that trustee Martin provided when I asked those questions, about how sometimes this has put the, the board in a position of then having a pool that has already been prescreened in a way that has not served us, or not, not enabled us to really get candidates that have the qualifications that we all were looking for. So, based on having had extensive discussions back in October, and we've had a lot of time to look at this policy, I just am uncertain why it's, it's in our interest right now to start changing the policy, delaying the timelines. And these timelines, I was not one of the trustees that was in favor of a rushed timeline, but everybody else seemed to be. And so I think that, you know, we now have a consultant on board, they, you know, time is money, and they have already said, you know, this is a timeline that we had to, that we should have agreed on ahead of time. We have seen these since way before December. So I think that we, we just need to move forward.
All right. So, what is the pleasure of the board at this time? Should we move forward?
Well, there's no, there's no action item on this. Trustee Brown, there's no action item on this tonight.
Thank you. No. I mean, unless, unless someone wants to move something else, we just go forward. But she had a couple other questions she asked.
Yes, so I do need to know what day you would like to schedule the forum.
Oh, that's where I was going.
That's what I was trying to look through.
Okay, so we have, since we know that we don't have to all be in attendance, we have the 8th March day, wrong date.
April.
Wrong month.
April.
Okay, so we have, Monday, the 6th is good for most of us. The 17th is okay, as well. The 16th, the 17th is okay. So, even the 19th is okay. So, you could choose.
Were, were April on?
So, just, just a minute.
Each, we have one, it depends, a lot of this is depending on how many candidates we have. I mean, each, each candidate should have a full day, for himself or herself.
That's correct.
So if we're gonna bring three people to campus, we need three days. If we're gonna bring four people to campus, we're gonna need four days, correct?
Yes.
Well, if eight people, we'll need eight days, so we better start bringing them early.
So anyhow, you had a timeframe from the 6th to...
April 6th through Friday, April 10th.
Okay, we have several trustees available in those days, so it really doesn't matter.
Okay. So we will select the best day.
Yeah, we have, okay.
And then, you had talked about doing a site visit of the person's campus.
Absolutely.
Okay. And so we'll talk about that at that time.
Yes.
In terms of, because we will need to schedule that with the appropriate campus.
Okay. And you did mention something about if the candidate was out of town, or out of, we should be prepared for that.
Prepared to travel, yes.
All right, any other question before we, okay, so...
Look, let me, I mean, is it appropriate, Ms. Cooper, to make a motion right now, that we take us up in a special meeting on the same day as our retreat, which is a Saturday?
A motion can be made to set a special meeting.
And it could be this Saturday, to coincide with our retreat?
Well, the notice requirement for a special meeting is 24 hours. So if the board were to pass a motion to set a special meeting, it could be set for Saturday.
Yeah. I don't want to waste a lot of time here, but I don't want to do this the improper way. So at least I would make a motion, we have a special meeting to address, once again, new information has come to us, and decide whether we want to stick to the same procedures we're using. And I would suggest the screening committee does not necessarily exclude people being allowed to interview candidates live. But that aside from that, I would just move, we have a, a special meeting this Saturday to address this issue and decide what we want to do with it.
Second there.
So we have a first, and we have a second. Okay. All, we'll take a vote.
Question.
Okay, first, we, any discussion, more discussion? How much more discussion do we need? So, should we take the vote? Okay, advisor vote.
Oh, discussion, yeah, I second it. I, I see it as an opportunity to think about it between now and Saturday, and figure out if there's anything in addition that we want to do in the way of specifying to the screening committee exactly what our expectation is of them.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Thompson, and a second by trustee Salvich.
I'd like to speak to it. I am going to vote against the motion. I think the screening committee has already been, have met with our consultants, they've already been trained in the EEO requirements, they've already been given us a timeline and so forth. And I, I feel that we don't want to change our, there's a lot of reasons for doing this, but I don't think we should need to change that process at this point. So I'm gonna vote no on this.
Okay, so, advisor vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it two?
Three.
Just the...
And I'm, I'm voting for it, because I have, my, my person has very big concerns.
You're talking out of turn.
So we have three in favor? Okay, oppose?
Aye.
Okay.
No. No, I'm, yeah, right.
We are, we do not, we oppose that it, that motion.
Right, the motion failed.
The motion failed.
President Brown, you need to actually call that out by name.
I'll be happy to.
We have to poll that vote, because it's not a unanimous vote.
So, oppose is trustee Mann, trustee Wall, trustee Martin, and trustee Brown, and student trustee. Okay, so that discussion is finished, complete? Okay, so do we have any other?
I think I have direction. There was one other item having to do with the process, whether the board would like to see additional evaluation materials during the interview process, such as a writing sample or presentations, things of that nature. You, if you do want to do that, you can give me the topics later, but we need to schedule it, if, if that's going to happen during the interviews.
Thank you so very much for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to item G, Resolution 528, in commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide.
Right, I have, I have five speakers. And again, we have, I will let you know when your time is running out, and again, three minutes. Yeah, three minutes, and pardon the Midwesterner who is not good with Armenian names. The first one, I think is, I can't tell if this is an A or R, Ella, Australian, would you please come to the podium? And then the next person will be Felicia.
My name is Ella Nasatryan. I appear before you today to speak in support of the Armenian genocide resolution on behalf of the Armenian National Committee of America Western Region, our 13 local chapters in the Los Angeles County, and the large number of Armenian-American students within Pasadena City College. On the eve of the centennial of the Armenian genocide, adoption of this resolution by the Board of Trustees will go a long way towards ensuring that the PCC community, faculty, and staff become aware of the first modern genocide. The plight of the Armenians at the hands of Ottoman Turkey was well-known by Americans. And beginning in 1915, America responded to the genocide with the most expansive humanitarian relief effort to date. Between 1915 and 1930, the American people through the Near East Relief saved more than 132,000 orphans of the genocide, and delivered an unprecedented $117 million in humanitarian, humanitarian aid. That's equivalent to $2.8 billion today. This organization evolved into the Near East Foundation, which became a model for later American government-lysactioned humanitarian aid projects such as USAID and the Peace Corps. The extraordinary contributions of the Near East Relief are being appropriately acknowledged this year as part of the ANCA Western Region: America We Thank You Initiative. Southern California is home to the largest concentration of Armenians outside of the former Soviet Union. Every member of our community is here as a result of the genocide, whether they immigrated immediately following the genocide, or more recently after their dispersion. It is vital for California to be familiar with the major events which brought so many of their friends, neighbors, and colleagues to the county of Los Angeles. Your commitment here today to teaching of the subject to PCC students and faculty, notably the extraordinary response of Americans during the genocide, will do exactly that. Furthermore, the resolution would provide an opportunity for PCC leadership to echo the message of countless governing bodies, including the California State Legislature, the Pasadena City Council, the Pasadena Unified School District, by conveying its support for a fair, just, and comprehensive resolution of this time.
Your time is almost up.
Accordingly, I urge you to adopt this very important resolution. Thank you.
Next, Felicia Kadamian.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, and thank you so much for allowing me here to speak. My name is Felicia Kadamian, and I am a board member with the Armenian National Committee of America Pasadena Chapter. As my colleague originally spoke a little bit about the Near East Relief, I'll also be elaborating a little bit about that as well. Founded in 1915, the currently-named Near East Foundation, formerly known as Near East Relief, is the United States' oldest congressionally-sanctioned, non-governmental organization, which for the first time in American history, expressed the collective generosity and humanitarianism of the American people. The Near East Relief served as a model upon which future philanthropic organizations, including the U, US Peace Corps, USAID, and future calls to oversee relief efforts known as citizens' philanthropy, were modeled. The highly-successful Near East Relief movement literally saved the Armenian nation from total annihilation. As a tribute to this effort, Armenian-Americans, most of whom are direct descendants of Armenian orphans and refugees rescued by Near East Relief, have initiated the America We Thank You Project to express our collective gratitude to the American people for the benevolence which allowed our nation to survive and thrive out of the ashes of destruction. On September 6, 1915, upon receiving Ambassador Morgenthau's urgent plea to assist, which states destruction of the Armenian race in Turkey is progressing rapidly, President Rudolf Wilson called upon advisor Cleveland H. George to form the American Committee for Armenian and Syrian Relief, specifically to help Armenians and other Christian minorities who are being forcibly deported from their homes and starved or killed in a systematic, premeditated campaign of genocide launched under the World War I by young Turk government of the Ottoman Empire. On September 16, 1915, under the leadership of James Barton and Cleveland H. George, the Army, the American Committee for Armenian and Syrian Relief was officially launched in New York. In order to facilitate the best possible response for the crisis, the committee was granted unprecedented access to all government files and communications describing the religious, social, and physical conditions of non-Muslims in the Ottoman Empire, specifically the native Armenian population. Over a period of 15 years, from 1915 to 1930, the Near East Relief mobilized the entire American nation, and indeed the world, into a well-organized, well-funded relief effort which successfully saved over 132...
Your time is almost up.
Thank you. Which saved over 132,000 Armenian orphans and 1 million refugees halfway around the world. Despite its initial funding goal of $100,000, which was later raised to 30 million, the Near East Relief raised over $117 million, which is the equivalent of $2.7 billion today. The Near East Relief had built over 400 orphanages, food and clothing distribution center, medical clinics and hospitals, and vocational training schools.
I'm sorry, but your, but your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, Doni Donabedian.
Honorable Board, Board members and guests, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to stand here before you and convey my message. My name is Doni Donabedian. I'm a board member on the... I'm a board member on the Pasadena ANCA, and we really appreciate all that you've done thus far. I'd like to convey my message. I am the grandson of two survivors. My paternal and maternal grandfathers had made it, but only just. One bribed himself out of captivity by Turkish soldiers and managed to survive that way, while the other, an infant, was cast into a lake by his mother, only to see him saved by a woman passing by. Imagine, if you will, a mother's desperation, where she would rather see her only surviving child out of 11 drown rather than see him impaled and disemboweled by stakes or split into two by swords, by the swords of the Turks. The more than 1.5 million innocent men, women, and children of the Armenian nation who were murdered premeditatedly could have easily multiplied to become 7, 10, or even 12 million today had their lives not been snuffed out of them by those heinous criminals, the Turks, whose cowardice until today compels them to do anything and everything, and with zeal, to cover up and deny the unspeakable acts of the pure evil that they had committed. And for what? Was it because Armenians were Christians? Was it because of their beautiful, wonderful language and poetry? Was it because we were peace-loving people? Or perhaps because Armenians have been known to be the hard-working, industrious, and nation-building race the Turks would never aspire to be? I suppose that's reason enough to try to systematically wipe out a people and nation. I use the word "these" instead of "those" simply because I strongly believe the current Turkish government, along with those that preceded it, can easily and unequivocally be construed as an extension of the Ottoman government of 1915 sans the word Ottoman. The murder of journalist Heran Tink a few short years ago, the imprisonment of those who speak of the Armenian genocide, and the gag rule on the very topic of the Armenian genocide is testament to the very tired old policy of the deplorable, denialless regime and anti-Armenian fervor and sentiment that the Turks espouse today as they did a century ago.
I'm sorry, but your time is, could you bring your remarks to a conclusion? Your time is almost up.
Sure. In short, nothing has changed. Their mindset is as it was then intact. Armenian architects, engineers, physicians, scholars, poets, and artisans, and culture helped build their nation and contributed to their society. Instead of them killing us with their kindness, they killed us with their swords, bayonets, and torture tools.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Alex Kalidian.
Alex, again. It's cute, it's weird.
Good evening, Board members. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board for taking up this resolution. I wanted to thank President Bob Miller and Secretary of the Board Mary Thompson for coordinating with me and members of this committee, hours on the phone, on the emails. And it was a very hectic process, but thank you very much for helping us on this resolution. Like any parent, a parent wants to set the best example for their child by doing the right thing. And by passing this resolution, you, as a college, are setting a good example for other schools, for other college districts, and for members in our community. The Los Angeles Community College has passed this resolution. Glendale Community College has passed this resolution. So as a student here, I'm strongly urging that the Board pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution with the deletion of the final paragraph.
With the deletion of what?
The final paragraph of the resolution.
Second that.
Remind the Board members, it's item G in your packets. Are they asking it to be deleted?
Are they asking to delete?
That was my motion.
No, but has the Armenian group asked that be deleted?
No, that was my, part of my motion. And if we move into discussion, I'll explain.
Okay, well, let's discuss this. Let me get mine out. I have one here. Is it, it's under tab G.
Is there a second?
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Ross seconded. Ross, you have a second. Okay, do you also want that deletion?
Yes, I'm seconding that motion.
Okay, great. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd just like to say I support the resolution. It's great, especially coming up on the 100th anniversary. However, I feel like the final paragraph oversteps our bounds. It seems to get into a sort of foreign policy issue, and if you read it, calling on the President, that sort of thing. I think everything else is fine.
Okay, any other?
Is, this is the text of the resolution that came to us from the community? Is that correct, Dr. Miller?
Yes, it is.
And I understand it was pulled and for some revisions? It was, does this, is this part of the revisions at the original?
And the first go-around, what we did is we edited it down to something that we thought would be supportive of what it was that the community wanted, but perhaps less specific in its nature. And then, as I recall, President Brown requested that it go back in its entirety, and it did go back in its entirety with the exception of one section that I pulled, which had to do with things that we, that would be directing our faculty to take certain action in their classes and what have you. And since we had not had an opportunity to discuss that with the, with our faculty through our shared governance process, we deleted that portion. Otherwise, it's intact as the community has presented it.
Okay, any other question? So are we going to, go ahead.
Right. I think it was two meetings ago when this first came up, and at that time, I mentioned that I am personally familiar. I've read Ambassador Morgenthau's diplomatic communications, what was going on in Van, and this even spilled over into some areas that are familiar names today, like Aleppo in Syria. And I have no problem with everything leading up to this, but it's my view that I agree with trustee Lewis that the last paragraph, which calls for particular steps by the President, you know, goes beyond what we should be concerned with here and gets into diplomatic and foreign policy matters.
Okay, any other questions?
And by the way, I recommend anybody who wants to, to become educated on this, you can really become educated on this by looking up, it's available online, the communications from Ambassador Morgenthau.
Call for the question, please.
Question's been called.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm going to vote against this because I don't see anything wrong in the last paragraph. It simply says, "Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees calls the President work toward equitable, constructive, stable, and durable Armenian-Turkish relations based upon Republic of Turkey's full acknowledgement, preparation of facts, ongoing consequence to Armenian genocide." With that coming to us particularly from the community that's directly affected by this, I don't see why we should not go ahead with it. We're just asking the President to do something that I think makes perfect sense, so I will vote no on this.
President Brown, the question's been called for. He called for the question.
Okay.
So we need to vote.
Okay, so how many, you're again, let's get the vote.
Aye.
You're voting against?
Aye, he said.
Aye.
Working, are we voting for his?
I'm sorry. Well, we need to, we want to know, how many will accept the motion as suggested by trustee Lewis?
Have a roll call vote. Just have a roll call vote.
Okay, so let's have a vote. So we have, in favor, how many are in favor with that?
Aye.
One, two, and oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's four. Okay, so you're, so is that?
Motion fails.
I'll make a motion to approve the original resolutions.
Second.
Trustee fellow, before you go on with that, could we get a roll call vote on the prior one?
Okay, so the roll call vote is trustee Lewis, trustee Salvage, and that's it, right?
Trustee fellow.
Trustee fellow.
Trustee fellow voted aye.
Trustee fellow, did you vote for the original?
Yes, I think it is a, it's a different application.
And it died, right?
He voted for the amended motion.
Okay, so it died, so you got it?
Yes.
Now I'm making a motion to approve the original, so we can move this along.
Second.
Okay, so in favor?
Aye.
Can I add, just, after the word President, we include "of the United States."
Yeah.
For clarity, please. Thank you.
Could you be the college?
I think that's who you meant. We've got a lot of Presidents up here, but this is not the one you're talking about, right?
Okay, so we will take the second vote with the correction that trustee Martin included. So, in favor?
Aye.
Student, choose then trustee.
No.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have trustee Thompson, aye, Berlinda Brown, trustee Waugh, Mann, Martin, and fellow. In favor. And oppose, we have trustee Lewis, and I would assume...
Abstain.
So, all right.
I want abstention.
You abstain this time? Okay, so we're done? Okay, so congratulations, and the resolution is accepted.
Trustee, trustee Brown?
Yes.
I would like to, I'm very cognizant of what President Martin said about we can't direct our faculty to do anything, but I would like to, I see your academic senate president was, oh, there he is, he's back there at the back of the room. I would like to suggest that we encourage the academic senate to consider incorporating material on the Armenian genocide as appropriate. And I know there's a couple of really interesting classes on genocide in general that might be interesting, and I'm sure that there's some transfer courses. So I would just encourage the senate to consider it. I don't think that's beyond our purview.
I'll be placing this on the agenda for tomorrow. Have the senate take this matter up.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will turn to, and I appreciate you guys coming two times in a row, okay? Alex? All right, so let's turn to something we've all been waiting for. Item H.
Thank you, President Brown. I'm going to read this. This is item H. It's an action item in the board packet tonight. It's the adoption of 2013-14 through 2015-16 collective bargaining agreement between the Pasadena City College Faculty Association and the Pasadena Area Community College District regarding wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for the 2013-14 through the 2015-16 academic years. This is presented to the board for their consideration for approval tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And we have a motion by Dr. Mann and a second by trustee Martin. Discussion. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to, because the last time we approved a contract with the Faculty Association, I think there was some lack of understanding of the rights of retired faculty to, for teaching assignments. So I would like to bring everyone's attention to the fact that in this contract, it specifically states that faculty who retire do not have a right to return, but they may return, and that, what their salary will be. I'm mentioning this and calling this out only because I hope that there will not be any confusion, and so that our very senior faculty, who've dedicated years of service, will not later feel that they have been mistreated or disrespected by the Board.
I just wanted to make a statement. I'm going to vote for this, but I do it very begrudgingly, as the Board knows. I do not believe in taking $3.8 million from reserves to pay for faculty salaries, and I hope the FA does appreciate what this Board has done. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Discussions then? Justie Lewis?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any, so it's all unanimous, right? All in favor voted, and none abstention. Thank you. Okay, let's go to I.
So, President Brown and Board members, as part of this agreement, the request for action item I reads as follows. Adoption of memorandum of understanding between the Pasadena City College Faculty Association and the Pasadena Area Community College District regarding compensation increases for the 2012-13 academic year.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by trustee Martin, second by trustee Waugh. Any discussion, questions? If not, advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, all, motion carry. Okay, so we move on to item J.
Thank you, President Brown. Also, in relation to the adoption of the collective bargaining agreement, item J speaks to Resolution 529, which is the supplemental early retirement plan for 2014-15, which is part of the collective bargaining agreement with the Faculty Association.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Justie Martin, trustee Waugh, for second. All in favor? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry unanimously. All right, seems like we've got to get out of here.
President Brown?
Yes.
May I make a statement?
Sure, you may.
Usually, when we pass this level of decision and magnitude, even on those times when it didn't take three or four years to get here, we all pause for just 15 seconds and take a breath and enjoy the moment.
Well, we have to come back next year and do it again.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of people we want to recognize, because I think there were a lot of people across this campus, and certainly, I don't want to speak for all the board members, but I really feel like every board member who wanted an agreement for many, many years wanted what's best for the district. We want what's best for the students and the entire staff. And sometimes, it's just a very hard thing to do. And so, I'm not sure who all out there is part in the negotiating team. I see some of our, Paul, and some of our team, and I want to say a special thanks to them. And if there's any members of the faculty negotiating team that have been working on this, I'd like to say a special thanks to them. And I'd like to particularly thank our acting superintendent-president, who was kind of the grinding point between both sides on this for many, many times, along with our professional over there, professional lawyer, of course, but in particular, Dr. Miller, for getting us here, because if you would have asked me not so many months ago if it would have been possible to get to this point this quick, I would have not believed it could have happened after what has happened in the past. So I think this really is, I think this deserves 20 seconds of enjoying the moment instead of 15, after all everyone's been through to get us here. And I, I just want to acknowledge all those that were involved with it. It's a very big decision for the district, but it's obviously a very important decision for the district. And the fact that it, I think in many ways shows what everybody's wanted for a long time, we're starting to work together and get there. So I'm very grateful.
So did we get through the 20 seconds? Or are we still counting?
I think we're done.
All right, oof. But I think trustee Martin is absolutely right. We've been through a lot, and hopefully, this will get us all going, and we could really do the job that we're called to do, you know? No side, nothing, just focus on what we're doing. So now, let's turn to item K.
Thank you. So item K is a Resolution Number 530, which will authorize reserves for contingencies to be used in 2014-15 in the amount of $3.7 million. This will help fund the contract with Faculty Association and also place reserves, make reserves available for other potential contract resolutions going forward.
Thank you. So do we have a motion? Justie Waugh made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Justie Mann, you have a question?
Yes. To what extent do we have currently a written policy with respect to how many dollars or percent of something we want to have, should have, are supposed to have in the way of reserve?
Yeah.
Written right now.
Exactly. The answer is, I do not believe there is a written policy that specifically states what the reserves are. The state has a mandated amount for community colleges of 5% of their district. Each community college district must have a minimum of 5%. Beyond that, this Board has, in practice for a long time, 15, 20 years or not longer, has had the practice of putting $12 million, $50,000... has had the practice of putting $12 million, $50,000 aside for reserves, and then on top of that, we have what we call a contingency operating reserve. This reallocation of the reserves would take us down to a little over 12% from where we are now. And then, obviously, well, not obviously, but we do have a plan to build back our reserves starting as early as the next fiscal year.
Is the 12% sort of an average, I know that is the 5% minimum, but is the 12% an average, do you think, or are we in the top third as far as having reserves?
Our district has typically been in the top third, I think that the 12%, it would probably put us in the top 50-plus percent easily. There are districts that have reserves as low as 5%. The LA district is famous for that, as an example. There's one district, San Bernardino, that has one as high as 33%, and you can imagine how that sits with folks. But in any event, we typically like to be in the 15, 16, 17% range if we can be, and that would be a target going forward.
Well, since the governor apparently has paid off the, backed the money that he owes us, and doesn't seem to be planning to hold our money, these contingency funds, there's not really the necessity for having as high a reserve as we had at one time when we knew we were going to go for three or four months and not get paid, which was like, $10 million a month, meant that we had to maintain a super reserve, is that correct?
That's correct, Dr. Mann. But one of the reasons why this district was able to weather the economic downturn as we did without layoffs and without furloughs was because of the healthy reserve policy that the board maintained, and the fiscal conservative nature of this board and this administration, and we plan to continue that going forward.
Any other comments? If not, advise we vote?
Could I make another comment? And I, it's just a comment that I remember hearing a couple of years ago when we were going through these painful discussions about salaries, and I took it very much to heart, this was a comment made by a retired faculty member, who I won't name, but some of the people there may know it. She said that when Dr. Scott was president, he asked us to bear with him during the lean times, and when the good times came, that he would, he would respond appropriately. I feel very comfortable with this, I think we survived the lean times, and I think this isn't appropriate, what we're doing now. We don't need to penalize our faculty and our staff.
Amen. Okay, so advise we vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose? All motion carries unanimously.
Everyone vote for that? Because I could have filled out, it wasn't. Oh, yeah.
So, if I may have just 30 seconds, first of all, I want to thank trustee Martin for his kind words, and certainly for the support of the board through this very important, as well as challenging, time that we've gone through. This was a very, very significant vote. I would also be remiss if I did not thank Dr. Julie Kiotis, who is the president of the Faculty Association, Danny Hammond, who is the co-lead negotiator, and others who were willing and able to sit across the table from me and from others on our team, and have a collegial collaborative professional open dialogue, which I think, which really helped get us to the point that we are here today. And I also want to mention Bruce Barsik, our lead counsel, who's also sage advice and experience was very helpful. And there are several people out in the audience that get some of the credit. Anyway, we move on, we move forward, and again, I want to thank the board and everybody else for their support of this important decision.
Great.
And I think Dave is on our team, and I, Dave, I want to acknowledge Dave, too. I was looking out there and I didn't look over here.
Well, if we're going to name names, which we should, so Dave Douglas, Bob Bell, Paul Jarrell, Kathy, Ryan, we had some significant people on our side who helped counsel me and kept things going. So there was a lot of people involved, it was a team effort. But again, it really boils down to people willing to talk to each other and try to do what's best for our students and our community.
Okay, so let's move to board policy revisions, Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Thank you, Bruce.
Board policy BB 2730, that's under tab L. This is a very minor change, we have just got the language wrong in this, and so where it had said, remember must have, it said beyond service on the board after January 1st, 1981. We went back and checked, it really said it must have served on the board. It didn't say anything about beginning it. So this is kind of a technical thing, I'd like to recommend that we make this change. As old as I am, I was not on the board in 1981, so it does not affect me personally. The second, BP 3200, is language that is requested by the, to get us in conformance with accreditation. It simply involves the trustee's role in the accreditation process of being informed. And the last one, BP 3300, is pretty much just a technical change to get the language consistence of that, and that, about access to the public, California Public Records Act. I would like to point out that BP 3200 and BP 3300 are board policies as opposed to the board bylaws, which we have been working with. And again, it's my understanding, and I hope we don't have to pull these back, that these have been reviewed by the appropriate bodies, and they are coming to us with a positive recommendation.
And a discussion?
So I would like to move that we, well, I'll move and then we can discuss, I'd like to move, we approve these three policies.
Okay.
Second.
We have a move by Dr. Mann, and a second by our student trustee Lewis. So, any discussion? Questions? Advise we vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Policies approved by unanimous votes. Okay, so now we will move to, oh my, the commencement speaker nomination. Yeah, I can hardly wait on this one.
Okay, well, let me start by saying that Dr. Bell, Dr. Levo, and I, and others have been in close discussion on this for quite some time, dating back almost from the time that I was named the interim superintendent and president. So, we pored over the board policy and procedures, and what we bring forth after following those procedures, the policy and the procedures, the administrative procedures to the letter, is a list of 11 possible candidates, and that's a board agenda item M. And what you have there are the names of the individuals, plus short bios on each of the 11 individuals. A preliminary Google search and other type of background search was done on all of these folks, so we are reasonably confident that they are all viable candidates. In your packets, right, in your packets, we sent also a memorandum from Dr. Bell. It went to the board officers, and it was given to all of the board members, an explanation of the process and what we would do and how we will do it. So we are attempting to be very, very transparent, and we'll dot our i's, cross our t's, and be very, very thorough in this process. So we bring to you, as the first step, a request to consider these 11, and then at the March 4 meeting, I will bring to the board for approval the candidate that we wish to extend the offer to.
Okay, we have a question by trustee, trustee Selvich.
I read the material here and went back and looked at the policy, I hadn't looked at the policy perhaps since we voted on it last year, but I don't remember getting the notice, you know, it says we outreach, there was outreach, I don't remember getting the notice saying, hey, if you have somebody's name, submit it.
Dr. Bell?
Did trustees get those?
No.
Notices?
Trustees have, the policy calls for a committee of three students, a member of the classified staff, a member of the administration, and a faculty member who formed the commencement speaker committee to do outreach to their respective constituent groups, to solicit names of respective candidates, and then the committee got together, vetted that larger list of about 32 names, and distilled it down to the 11 names you have before you now. So the policy calls for the shared governance group to be involved, it does not speak to recommendations directly from board members.
Okay, well, I'm looking at AP 5950, item 2, letter A, the committee shall solicit suggestions from all members of the campus community, and recommended candidates to deliver the commencement speaker address. Procedure should start no later than the month of October. Now, as I say, I don't remember when I had ever, you know, read this carefully, but I was getting sort of nervous that, you know, I hadn't heard anything about this, and I was ready to submit a name.
I think the issue here is the definition of campus community, and whether board members were included in that or not, and I guess the answer is no, from what I'm understanding, Dr. Bell.
Well, based upon the way the policy reads, and it clearly identifies in 1A, 1, that the committee shall be comprised of three student members, one of whom is the associated student body president, the executive vice president, two prospective graduates, we negotiated that and did that with the associated students. President Roscoe and trustee Lewis were part of that group. A faculty member, who was James Aragon, an administrative member appointed by the superintendent president, that was me, and a classified member, that was Nise Albright, that was the operative committee.
I understand that my question is not what the committee was made up of, but am I considered to be part of the campus community from whom suggestions might be solicited?
The answer apparently is no.
If I may. I see. Well, maybe we can attend to that for the next cycle.
I think the problem is that, I think the problem is that this calls for the selected members to ask their constituents, and I don't think anyone calls you their constituent.
Well, I think it's, before we get into, if I may, before we get into a large.
I am disappointed that I did not have an opportunity to propose somebody who I had talked with last year during all that fall draw.
Certainly, certainly, I think that, it's, we've heard you, Dr. Selvich, and the board and others can discuss this for the next year, but for now, I think our process is what it is, yeah.
Can I just, for 2016, can I just throw out a name that I thought would have been very appropriate this year? And I'm fine with this, these are good people, is that Edward James Olmos, who I thought would be very appropriate, since we're honoring Mr. Escalante this year. And he's, he did, and Bill has connections with him, and he did say he would speak this year, but.
He spoke last year at the annual event of the Pasadena Occasional Foundation, which was held in front of City Hall. He was absolutely magnificent. He had the audience spellbound, and he actually stayed around afterwards to mingle with people, and it was just a great evening, so he is a good, good speaker.
Okay.
I think that, now, the AP 5950 is a procedure, it is not a board policy, so any changes in this would have to be made, would have to go through the shared governance process. But I think, kind of in the past, often the board members have been consulted, so maybe you might want to look and, and see if the board members could make any suggestions they have, could we make at the beginning of the process, not at the end. I think what would get in trouble is when at the very end, the board members have suggestions. So maybe that could be revised or looked at, and that would go through a process separate from the board's policy review.
Father Greg Boyle was the speaker at the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast a few years ago, and again, he is absolutely outstanding, so I would have no hesitation whatsoever in recommending him very, very strongly as you go forward with the process. I don't know what his availability might be, but.
Me, too. I love Father Boyle.
What?
I love Father Boyle.
Oh, he is, he is fabulous, he's the, would be a great commencement speaker.
I do have a question. I guess the president is entitled to have a question. So, what I would like to know is, I know we got in a little shaky stuff last year. I've been trying to talk to Dr. Mann about the policy. Now, is it, to my understanding, or should we all understand, or accept, or maybe not, that the superintendent of the college is who makes the final say? And we had trustee Ward, trustee Mann, and I had some pretty intense conversation about that, because I know that when the trustees say, well, you know, I believe brother so-and-so is very good, and blah, 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 then, you know, it sort of carry a lot of weight, and it sort of put the superintendent in a precarious position. But I think the superintendent of the college should be making the decision as to, of course, with the students, as to who the speaker for the commencement should be, or am I just way offbeat? Please, someone help me. Yes?
Well, I believe the policy calls for the committee to make the suggestion to the superintendent president, the superintendent then makes the suggestion to the board.
Board.
The board then votes based on review, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. This is about students, so I believe we, although we may love all these people and wish this upon them to speak for us, but I think the student voice is what we should be listening to, it's their graduation.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to support the president, Ms. Brown, the president of the board, I really think it's up to the superintendent. We ran into problems last year because the students had too big of a voice, and it was very problematic, but it's really the president who invites no one else.
Okay, my dear.
Well, I would also support that ultimately, let's, you know, let the superintendent take the lead, but I also have to say that, having sat on that committee last year.
Oh, boy.
And heard some of the issues, I also agree that it should be the students, you know, we should pick someone who resonates with the students. I know many times, many of us may have lots of great ideas of who we think should be out there, and we may agree or disagree, but if we pick someone who is not, you know, does not speak, and is not really, someone who resonates with the students, I mean, I walked out one year, and I heard students just felt very disenfranchised and disengaged from it, so, and I don't think that's what we want.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that trustee Fellow, you just said that the students had too big of a voice?
I think so, I got the, I got the brunt of it, and I love Mr. Black more than anybody, and I'm a fan of his, and I got the brunt of it in the press, that it was my fault.
Well, I don't think that was the issue, students having too big of a voice, I mean, it is their commencement after.
I believe, I'm from a university, and the president never asks students who's going to be the commencement speaker, it is really the president.
All due respect, this isn't your university.
I know, but it should start acting like it sometimes.
Okay, let's move right along.
Trustee Brown, if I may, just to clarify for the board where we are now, if the board approves these 11 names, these names are presented to you in alphabetical order. The committee, the commencement speaker committee will convene tomorrow and priority rank these, and then they will begin the process of outreach to all of the candidates based upon priority rank to determine their availability. And when we finish that process, which is expected to be concluded by the end of next week, we will then issue that name to Dr. Miller, who will then bring it back to the board at the, at the March 4 meeting, for the board to approve that name. Once the board approves that individual, Dr. Miller will then contact and extend the offer.
And if I may add, I just, there's one paragraph in the memorandum that Dr. Bell sent to the board that I think is important, as everybody's aware of, and I'll just read it verbatim. While not specifically addressing the administrative procedure, in the event a candidate from among the recommended list of individuals cannot be secured to serve as a speaker, additional student speakers or the 2015 Faculty of the Year could be asked to address the graduates. So if for some reason, one of these 11, we cannot find somebody 11, then our plan is to default to either student speakers or Faculty of the Year speaker or both, and not prolong this process.
That's good.
Well, okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that we do have a commencement advisory committee, and I don't see no one that had consulted them. So we have a commencement advisory committee, and we have a commencement speaker committee. This according to our website. So under the commencement speaker committee, we have administrative classified member Scott Thayer, no longer here. Then we have only two faculty members, James Aragon and Linda Hensman, but Dr. Bell mentioned more individuals. Now, if you go to the commencement advisory speaker, excuse me, commencement advisory committee, we have Scott Thayer, we have Syria Lovett, we have Lisa Sugimoto, Amy Omer. So this is one of the problems that we have right now that we're trying, that I mentioned last time, they're trying to clear up, that we have individuals on committees that have long departed the college. So this is one of the reasons why we need to clean it up, and if we were to simply base ourselves on the information from our own website, then we see that the individuals that are making, that comprise the commencement speaker committee are simply two, James Aragon and Linda Hensman. And if individuals read that, go to our website, they're going to say that it's, that we don't have enough voices in there. have enough voices in there. So it's one of the things that we definitely need to clear up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely, and just a very quick response on the website. We know that there are many, many pages, hundreds or not thousands of pages on the website that are out of date, and that's part of our whole Omni Update process, and we hope to have that wrapped up by the fall, but certainly President Cairo is correct, the information up there is incorrect. But we did have faculty representation, I heard you mention James Aragon is on this committee as well.
Yes, we called out to all the constituent groups to nominate individuals to serve on the committee based upon the board procedure. Professor Aragon indicated that he had leave from the academic senate to serve, he did serve in that capacity, a call for one faculty member, he served in that one. There was a parallel service from the classified senate, three students and myself, so it was a committee of six, and that is clearly what's stated in the policy, but your point is very well taken. If you look at the current board procedure that we followed and what's on the website, they're clearly not in sync.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
One comment, and then I'll be happy to make the motion, but...
Thank you.
If we go back to last year, and I think we certainly would all acknowledge, last year was an unusual one and not our typical procedure, but it is really imperative that we follow the procedures that we have in place, that these people have presumably been screened to determine their availability, or at least that's the next step in the process. I think it is important that it come back, and not that the superintendent president be given the responsibility and perhaps burden of making that decision, but make a recommendation to the full board, so that if something were to happen like last year, you would have some people to look to and say, I just made a recommendation. Recover.
Exactly. No, believe me, we will follow the policy and the procedures to the letter and do the best we can.
I'm confident you will.
And we'll take down that website page tomorrow.
Justie Martin.
I have a friendly amendment to this list that, though it may sound ridiculous, I think we should include, and that is, I think we should always have a standing invitation to the governor of California and to the president of the United States. And as ridiculous as it sounds, and we understand the probabilities are extremely low, the governor of the state has spoke at Santa Monica Community College not too many years ago, and the current president of the United States has a lot vested in the community college movement, and I think any other speaker on the list would, even with a last minute notice, politely stand down to either the governor or the president of the United States. So that would be a de facto friendly amendment that I would place on here if the rest of the trustees would agree.
Student, trustee.
Again, that's not part of the policy. We didn't lock out the possibility of President Obama, we actually talked about Michelle Obama, the governor and these things, but when we went to our constituents and asked for names and types of speakers, they just weren't there. So it wasn't that we excluded them based on, well, the president will never speak here, it was that it wasn't part of what we got from constituents. So I think to make that amendment would be egregious against the policy we have in place.
Yes.
I'm speaking as a segue to the amendment. Those of us who were in Washington last week, when we met with our advocates, we were told, as we've been told before, there is a chance that our advocates could maybe get us the secretary of labor, or maybe Mrs. Obama, Biden, not Mrs. Obama, Mrs. Biden. But our policy, our procedure is such that we have no flexibility, because it's my understanding from what we heard is, you never really, really know if you're going to be able to get some at that high level until maybe just before, just before we do. So if we're going to look at this procedure, not the board policy, which we could easily keep, but look the procedure, it might be nice to have some kind of flexibility. I cannot imagine the students would not like to have the second lady of the United States speak at their commencement, that, but maybe not. That seemed to me to be a real honor. At least you would remember who it was. I tell you, if someone told me they'd give me a million dollars, I couldn't tell you who spoke at my commencement, any one of the three commencements I went to.
Okay, trustee Waugh.
I think that certainly, we would all be glad to have Mrs. Obama, or President Obama, or Governor Brown come to speak, but I think that we all know it takes a lot of relationship building, and it takes a little bit of planning, and it doesn't just happen at the drop of the hat. Now, it could be that one day President Obama is out visiting East LA College to congratulate them, and it happens to be during our commencement, and maybe he could come over, but I think it takes a little bit of planning. You know, we used to look at this list that was submitted to the board and had like, I don't know, 100 names on it, and I would say 90%, there was no chance in heck that we would ever get any of those people, or that anyone was even working on a relationship building. So I think it's, I think it's almost disrespectful to put names down, that we have no intention of even building a relationship and trying to get them. So I'd rather see people who are on there that we are actively trying to engage and doing something to get them in. When President Obama did come, I think, I think it was to Cal State Fullerton, it was because there was this huge letter-writing campaign that went on, you know, and that's an active and very concentrated kind of an activity to make that happen.
Okay, so I don't think we have a motion. Do we have a motion?
To approve the list?
Motion to approve the list.
Did trustee Martin make a motion?
Well, I was gonna, I have to make, it's obviously not a friendly amendment, it's gonna have to just be an amendment. So I'll just have to do it in procedural style, so he's gonna make his motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Lewis, and a second by trustee Waugh. Okay.
And I would move to include the president of the United States and the governor of California on the list. Amend, I would move to amend.
Okay, so do we want...
You need a second for the amendment.
Do we have a second for the amendment? Do we have someone that would like to second that amendment? No seconds, or dies?
Okay, so they'll just have to meet with me.
So, okay.
Motion for the original staff recommendation?
Well, he already did.
Already have it.
He's already done that. Okay, let's vote on it.
That's what I was amending.
Call for the question.
Trustee?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously? Thank you. Okay.
President, President Brown?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd just like to say that after the Northridge earthquake, President Obama did come to the campus, and it only cost Cal State, Northridge...
Obama?
I'm sorry, President Clinton, I'm getting my presidents confused, did come to the campus, and it only cost the university $400,000 to arrange for that visit.
Oh, Lord.
And although that was unusual, in that we had no standing buildings, and we had to build a special place for him, I've talked with a trustee who also had a presidential visit, and it can easily cost $100,000. And that doesn't include the cost of the security for the Pasadena police, and so on. So some of these visits by people to a certain high level can be very, very expensive.
Thank you. Okay, now, we go to turn to informational items?
Thank you. We have just two tonight. The first one, item N, is on the student equity plan, and Dr. Levo, I believe, is going to do that, if I see Dr. Levo coming to the podium here. This is a first reading, if you will, on the plan, and Dr. Levo's going to share with you the work of our committee and all those who have been involved.
Good evening, board members and shared governance leaders. I have with me members of the committee, and I'd like to introduce to you Marilyn Johnson and Keri Afusso from Classified. From faculty, we have Patricia Derange Martin, Bianca Richards, Mary Erin Crook, and from management, we have Crystal Colross. So our student equity project was actually an assignment given to us by the chancellor's office, and what we were provided with is an allocation of $1 million, a little over $1 million, and we were charged with investigating our research to identify if there were student equity gaps for the following groups: women, men, students from low socioeconomic backgrounds, foster youth, veterans, disabled students, African-American students, Asians, Latino, Native American, Pacific Islander, and also to disaggregate the data by age. And these are the performance areas. We were to review access to PCC based on the individuals who live within the district, course completion, also known as retention, ESL basic skills completion, our transfer numbers, as well as the number of students who complete a degree or certificate. All of us became statistical experts, it was quite a journey, I tell you, spending five hours on a Saturday learning how to do proportionality index measurements, as well as 80% rule measurements. Right, ladies? It was a lot of fun. And so the chancellor's office requested that we use data from the cohort of students that entered PCC six years ago, and we did this for data that was available through our own PCC institutional effectiveness office, as well as the chancellor's office data mart and economic modeling specialist. And I gave you a preview of some of the detailed tables, so that you could see in red where our equity gaps exist. This is for access for individuals who live in the district. So there are gaps for people from Asian, African-American, Native American, Pacific Islander, and white communities, as well as individuals who are 35 years or older. We have achieved equity for Latino students, as well as female and male, and everyone from the, under the age of 20 to 34. Course completion. You'll see there that our traditional course completion rate, and that's retention, we have gaps for African-American and American Indian, Alaskan native. Basic skills, English, and you'll see in bold red, the groups that have two measurements that tell you we have a huge achievement gap for African-American, Latino, Pacific Islander, males, individuals in the age group of 20 to 34, and 40 and above, students with disabilities, and foster youth. You can also peruse the data about ESL and basic skills math. Some of the highlighted findings for our transfer and completion, we have achieved equity in transfer for students from white and Asian backgrounds, but all other groups are not at equity. Our completion rates for associate degree completion, we are at equity for Asian students, those from unknown backgrounds, and females, but all other groups, we are not at equity. For career tech education certificates, we are at equity for students from Latino, white, Asian, unknown, and female, and all other groups, we are not at equity. So the whole point of this exercise is that as a campus, we are to identify activities to address the achievement gaps. And what the committee has decided to do is to really engage all of the campus, to come up with ideas within a framework, to identify what activities will be successful in helping us to close the achievement gap. We did some research, and we found the American Association of Colleges and Universities is a national reliable association that has data to support high-impact practices. And so we've created a rubric while highlighting high-impact practices, also known as HIPS, and we're asking the campus to please work within the HIPS, as well as the Center for Community College Student Engagement out of Texas, and they have data to support the promising practices that are showing success in moving the needle on student completion. So we are asking the campus to submit ideas and projects, including HIPS and promising The other part of the funding would be to create an infrastructure to support student equity at PCC, and that would be to utilize a portion of our allocation to hire a manager, to give that person a budget, to ensure that we support research within the institutional effectiveness office, so that we always have a researcher available to analyze this data and to evaluate our projects. To continue to design and implement a request for proposals program and support the faculty and staff who submit projects. And the committee thought it was very important to start a dialogue about how to support students and their affective issues, and the issues that impact their academic performance that are non-school-related, such as access to appropriate food, shelter, low-cost legal services, also known as, you know, social worker type of services. One of the ideas that we are looking into as a committee is a product that trustee Linda Waugh told us about, which would help us to identify a case management system where students could figure out where to get these social work types of services right in our own region. So that's one of the projects the committee is also looking into. Our draft rubric, we are going based on a scale of one to five, with the measurement being potential to close the equity achievement gap, one being minimal or no potential, to five being high potential. We would like people to address multiple promising practices, to connect two or more departments or programs across the college, so that we're not working in silos, to target equity outcomes, and populations that the chancellor's office told us to target. We'd like a scalability plan, because we do not want to support a project that potentially would go away if the funding goes away. We'd like to see an evaluation and assessment plan. How will we train and support people to implement the project? And if the product, if the project will include a technology product, we need to make sure it's 508 compliant. And these are some of the high-impact practices by the American Association of Colleges and Universities. And we would like to thank the board for supporting members of the committee, as well as the academic senate executive board, and members of the management association and classified staff who recently attended the national conference for the AACNU, where many of these HIPS were discussed. And that's the end of our PowerPoint presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
Dr. Levo, on slide four, student equity gaps access, it says individuals who live in district, and then the top of the first column says service area, population. Those seem to be differing. The service area and the district aren't the same thing, am I incorrect? Because this doesn't look like the same demographic layout that we have seen recently.
You know, this data was accessed from the Economic Modeling Specialist Incorporated research database. Dr. Corner helped us to get this data, and so this is for the PACCD area.
The what?
The Pasadena area community college district.
Okay.
So I want to thank you for this study. I think it was really good. It was very enlightening, and I can tell a lot of work has gone into this. So just a couple of questions. On that same slide, I also noticed that, you know, we're, there's a huge area of our population that either we're not servicing, or they don't seem to come to us, and I know it's outside of the student equity, but it would be kind of interesting to know why they're not coming, and where are they going, if they're jumping over to another college, and why that's happening. The other thing, too, that just came to mind, I really support all efforts and actions for student equity and to close the student equity gaps, and I was wondering, on your action plan, does any of this tie, do you see any of it tying into the disaggregated data issues that we looked at in Sacramento, or...
We do. Actually, it's a very good point, trustee Waugh. The issues that we confronted in Sacramento and brought up in Washington DC on our recent legislative advocacy trips to ensure that data, especially for Asian and Pacific Islander communities, is disaggregated, so that as educators, we could do the appropriate research to figure out how to meet student needs, you know, through the lens of... to figure out how to meet student needs, you know, through the lens of culture, is something that we're very interested in. And if we have the infrastructure in place, somebody would be responsible for helping to do that.
Thank you. Yes.
Right, back on page four, I didn't quite understand the answer to trustee Lewis's question.
Sure.
The, it says in district on the line at the top, and then the first column says service areas. Are those the same geographic areas?
Yes. So, if you look at, let's take African-American as an example. Within the Pasadena Area Community College District, so we looked at our ZIP codes, there are 6.5 percent African-Americans who live in our district. But our student count is 4.8 percent, so we have a gap of .74. So, we could have a campus community member who could propose a project to increase the African-American student recruitment effort, so that we can achieve equity, and we wouldn't have a gap. We would have 6.5 percent African-American student enrollment here, so that we truly mirror the community that we serve. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes. Sure, sure. Yeah, well, I, so the nomenclature could have been the same for both of those. The other question that I got, well, twofold. One, you say this first column there, the service area population, that was information that we purchased from somebody that does demographic information, data?
It's actually available for free, and we were able to obtain it through Dr. Ryan Corner.
Yeah, okay. So, that's probably census data or something.
The Data Mart, Ryan, is that where it came from?
It's not free. We purchase a subscription to access the data.
Right. And what's the source? Can you come to the mic real quick, please?
Is it Claritas?
Economic Modeling Specialist is what was cited as the reference.
Okay. I don't need to know what that is right now. My second, second part of my question is, is the data available for age cohorts? The, I would imagine, and I've looked at demographics, you know, in this general region for a long, long time, I would expect that the ethnic breakdown for the age group that attend Pasadena Community College, or City College, could be significantly different than this. And if we're making comparisons to, you know, the people that are going to come to college, to see whether or not they're overrepresented and underrepresented, all this other stuff that we do in the subsequent tables, it would be best if we had the breakdown here for the age groups that we expect to see.
So, age groups within the different ethnic groups?
Right. Yeah, well, yeah, take, take the age group for the Community College District, and then say, okay, what is, what is that ethnic breakdown?
Sure. That's a good point. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
No. Well, go for it. Oh, he said he had to follow up.
I'd like to follow up on that point, if I may. So, I took a class at UCLA from Thomas Sowell, economist, then later at Stanford, and he did a lot of publishing in this very area. And to support Mr. Salvage's point, one of the points that professor Sowell pointed out was that, and this was some years ago, so the data could be significantly different today, but the average Hispanic American is under the age of 25. The average Jewish American is over the age of 45. Well, if that's were true still today, as it was when he published that article, it's the age data that's driving
Enrollment.
The enrollment data up above, and that, that comment from him, albeit however many years ago, would explain why there's 44.7 in the Hispanic area. So, I'm kind of supporting what trustee Salvage is saying, is many times, there's a certain variable that's driving the stat. I mean, we're going to have to really struggle to try to get four point, to try to get 39 percent of the students here to be 50 and over. That could be a challenge.
And Dr. Corner just mentioned to me that the data that you mentioned is available, so we can definitely get that.
Yes, I, I know we're using the chancellor's office, you know, the, what they're asking, but one of the things that I think we looked at in our breaking down of our own data is almost as many students as percentage wide identifies themselves as mixed race. Mixed race, that's a significant number of students, and then when you have mixed race and decline to state, you probably have 25, 20 percent or more of the students. So, I, and I think particularly, we can look at, you know, put aside decline to state, but a mixed race, I think, is a, is a growing category. And I, you know, I have grandchildren who are, who are mixed race, and that's the way they identify themselves. And I think it's, we need to maybe start trying to educate the chancellor's office on that, because we miss a significant percentage of our students.
Yeah, we will, we'll actually, we can look at the chancellor's office Data Mart to see if that data is available. I think for the cohort that they asked us to use six years ago, it's not available.
Right. But it's something that's, that's
Yes.
And people in Washington DC seem very surprised when we mentioned mixed race. To them, it's, they refer, they refer to us as the canaries in the cage out in the field.
So, this is a first read. I will return for the approval of the Board of Trustees. On Monday, I'm set to present with the faculty at the Academic Senate meeting. This does require the signature of the president of the Academic Senate, as well as Dr. Bell, Dr. Miller, and myself. And we hope to bring this to you at the next board meeting, so that we could submit to the chancellor's office, get our $1 million, and move on with our plan. So, thank you very much.
One question, if I may.
Yes.
The last several years, we've been going out and visiting African-American churches in Pasadena, in the attempt to get more information out about Pasadena City College and encourage students to come here. Has that had any effect, or do we know the answer?
Well, we have definitely continued with our Super Sunday activities. And one thing that we have to do better, and we have our interim director of outreach and transfer, Tamika Alexander, is to code each event, where we intake prospective student information, so that we can track the impact that those outreach efforts yield for us.
Let me see if I can add a little bit more information. The President's African-American Advisory Committee, which Dr. Bell co-chairs with me, has been actively discussing the visitation. I don't think, I don't think they took place last year, but there is a conversation about them starting again. But I also want to add very quickly that we do need to do much better with our African-American population. We only have, if you will, 4.5 percent of our students are African-American. And in my brief discussions with some of our outreach people, and some of our faculty, and some of our administrators responsible for programs of that nature, we get them in, but we don't retain them. That's one of our problems. So, we have services now, or we're beginning to design some interventions, if you will, that will, that will work more towards retention of our African-American students.
Right.
Particularly black African-American male students.
Yeah, I think what this data points out, however, is we not only have a retention issue, but we have an access issue. We have more African-Americans that could come here that are not. So, I think that deep relationship building with our K-12 partners in programs, let's say, like dual enrollment, I think that will help us build trust with students, their parents, and I think we will see an increase in student enrollment, especially from students from historically underserved populations.
Which brings me to my final point here, which is, the nice thing about this is, this is not an unfunded mandate, this is a significantly funded mandate from the state, and the good work of our faculty and our administrators and our classified members to develop a plan, which is what's needed in order for us to get our hands on the money to begin to address the issues that we're describing right now.
Yes.
One final question. I don't know if I missed it, but is this a temporary program that we'll be setting up?
It's not. It's actually a line item budget, which will be funded until we hear otherwise. And what I've heard is that, you know, the, the budget in California always goes in cycles, but for now, it's funded. We're slated to receive $1.4 million next year. So, we definitely do need to get a manager hired to help us, you know, administer this budget in an effective way.
And that's a million this year, and a 1.4 next year, and then?
Correct. And then, depending upon the funding formula, which is all based on our enrollment, it might be, it might stabilize at 1.4 million.
And let me add very quickly, because it's important, the Student Success Task Force, of which Dr. Mann was a member, this is one of the 22 recommendations to create a student equity fund to support this. So, it's the intention of the chancellor and his staff, and hopefully, as the economy continues to, to go well, this is ongoing money
Yes.
For years to come.
I just would like to thank the, there are over 20 members on the committee that I work with on this project, and they're just doing an awesome job. It's really a great collaborative effort. Thank you.
I made just one final comment. I think this is really important, and I think the outreach efforts that we're making must continue and expand if we can, because we serve, what, 11 high schools in our geographic area we represent? And if we can go visit them, or visit churches, or whatever is the best way to really contact with the community, communities, I should say, we do exactly that, because that's who we serve and what
How much of our percentage of our enrollment comes from outside of geographic area? 60, 65 percent? It's over 70 percent right now.
Which is nice. It's a good compliment for the college, but I think we owe it to our, our own schools and constituents to try to do a better job of reaching out to them here, so. Thank you for your good effort, your good work.
President Brown, I, I was going to make that, I mean, this is very skewed, when you realize that this, students in our service area is only 30 percent of all of our student, our student body. So, again, maybe in working with the chancellor's office, we need to send the message that, you know, we are not just our service area, because in the, in the new funding formula, that service area is killing us.
It's the same problem.
It's the same problem. So, particularly in these urban areas, they need to look at a much broader, you know, reach, because if you look at where our students come from, probably the percentage of African-American students go way, goes way down, and the percentage of Latinos would go up.
Sure. And when we have a project manager in place, we could actually do our own, I mean, we, we definitely have to do what the chancellor's office is asking, but we could advocate for them to allow campuses to submit data based upon who enrolls, and then we could also
Where the students actually come from.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Dr. Leva.
Thank you. Okay, and next, we have our accreditation update.
Yes, we have a brief report from Stephanie Fleming, who is our self-evaluation coordinator.
Hi, good evening. I have a brief update for you all. I just wanted to let you know that as we're preparing for our site visit, what some of the efforts that we're doing to engage in that activity. The first thing I want to bring your attention to is, everyone should have a copy of the accreditation site visit booklet. I think a year, maybe two years ago, Dr. Mann had shared with us a booklet that you had received when you were on a, a visit at Grossmont College, we thought it was a fantastic idea. And so, we wanted to make sure that we did something, something comparable that would serve the purpose of informing folks, not only about what happens during a site visit, but also some of our key policies and processes. And I talked to you briefly about this before, but just to kind of look at this, and for the hardcore five that have remained in the audience, we have some booklets over on the table, and we have several more. So, just going through the booklet very, very quickly, there's a site visit overview, which kind of answers some of the general questions about what happens during a site visit. We have the site team roster. We also have some tips for folks as they prepare for the site visit. Then we have some common questions that team members tend to ask of folks on our campus as they engage in interviews, or come across people on our campus and in the community. Several of those include our mission statement, our core values, issues about our EMP, you know, goal setting, and how that relates to planning. Assessment, you know, assessment on our campus, and how we, we go through that process. Also, some brief information about our program review process. One of the key things that many of you know that ACCJC likes to focus on is our evaluation processes, and how that leads to substantive improvement on our campus. And there's also some brief information in here about our shared governance process. And then finally, in the back, the last page just gives a very, very brief, or the second to the last page, gives a very, very brief explanation of the topic areas that our AIPs, those actionable improvement plans, cover, so that everyone has an idea of the areas that were identified for improvement through the self-evaluation process. And so, everyone has this. We have hard copies that we're preparing for folks, and that we give to them when we're going through information sessions. And then also, we are planning on sending out an email to the campus community with some other information, and in that, we'll have a link to the electronic version of this, which will be up on our website. The other thing that we're doing is, we're going through some of the information sessions with some of our committees and the key personnel that we have, know that the site team has asked to interview, or to visit, or to view those, those committee meetings. And so, we're sharing this information with them as well, in addition to some of the common questions that ACCJC team members tend to ask of folks. And so, our next steps will be to continue to share this with the campus, to continue to go through those information sessions with folks, as we continue to prepare. Already up on our website is the calendar that talks about the open forums, and we've talked about that in here with you, and it lets everyone know when those open forums are. But we will also send out next week, by next week, I'm hoping by the end of this week, but we're going to say next Monday at the latest, flyers that actually advertise each one of those open forums, with some of the information about where they are, and some of the regulations, like not videotaping and things like that, that ACCJC requires of us in those types of open forums. And so, we'll be continuing to communicate all of those events to our campus community and the community at large via email, the hard copies of things like this when we visit with people face-to-face, and then, as well as on our website.
All right. Any questions? Will we get a schedule?
Yes, yes, you will.
When?
Any other?
As soon as we have confirmation from the team chair. So, we're in the process of the team chair making, you know, suggesting who they want to see, and we're going through that. It hasn't been totally finalized. It's, we're waiting on them. So, as soon as it's finalized with them, then we will share that with you all.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Superintendent President, report.
Thank you. I have two items. First, I just wanted to mention that we had a very successful trip to Washington DC to the Association of Community College Trustees Legislative Convening. And the "we" specifically were trustees Wa, Mann, and Lewis, and associated student board member Kelly Vaughn. While in Washington, we met and were shepherded around by Jordan Bernstein and his colleague with Cassian Associates, who is our Washington-based lobbying firm. And both Jordan and Deborah did an incredible job of setting up a number of very, very useful discussions. On the congressional side, we met with Congresswoman Chu. We also met with Congressman Adam Schiff. Then we were at the Department of Labor, met with the Director of the Center for Workforce and Industry Partnerships, Catherine Manis. We then were able to meet with Deputy Undersecretary of Education, Jamin Studley, and then also Akil Borja, who is with the Department of Education with the Asian-American, Native American, Pacific Islander Group, or the Anapesi Group. And then finally, we had a meeting with Ralph Heinz, who's Director of the Department of Education Fund for the Improvement of Secondary Education. Now, in those meetings, we had several opportunities, including the opportunity to present facts, figures, information about our college, and the success of our college, and how well we sort of compared to others. But more importantly, we were able to solicit from them inside information, if you will, and a number of funding opportunities and grant opportunities, and we were able to shape some policy decisions regarding things like the National Scorecard and, and other opportunities. Then the last things that we did while we were there, we met with the California State delegation several times, and Chancellor Harris and others. So, now, the question becomes the follow-up. We are meeting with staff right now, and we'll be jumping very quickly on many of the opportunities. So, all told, I think it was a successful trip, and like, again, I want to thank all those who, who participated. And the last thing that I wanted to mention, we have a celebration of African-American heritage going on right now for the African-American Month. And last night, I had an opportunity to attend one of, it looks like about 12 or so events that are occurring between February 3rd and February 27th for African-American History Month. And last night, I had an opportunity to listen to a lecture And last night, I had an opportunity to listen to a lecture by Bobby Seal, who is an American civil rights activist, but he was a co-founder, along with Huey Newton, of the Black Panther Party back in 1966. And he now works towards improving social services in black neighborhoods and other causes. And I have to tell you, it was a fascinating lecture by, by Mr. Seal. To get that perspective, he's now in his 70s, and to listen to someone talk about history, there were well over 200 people in the room here last night. Dr. Christopher Hemenesi West, excuse me, Hemenesi West and many others brought this on, brought this to our campus. Dr. Bell and several others have been supporting this event this month, and it's just very, very good things. And I just want to plug, tomorrow night, right here, from 5:30 to 8:00, is a Taste of Soul. So, if anybody wants some soul food, they are going to be serving it right here tomorrow night, and so, that might be fun for those of us who would like some soul food. So, the point is, is that we are live and well. Next, actually, this month, we've got, actually, next month, we've got the tribute to Jaime Escalante that we will be featuring, and it's going to be an amazing event. You'll have more information on that. So, that's my report.
Great, okay. Now, from shared governance, let's start with President Kyler.
Thank you. So, already mentioned the various committees that we're going to be cleaning up. I spoke with Dr. Ryan Corner, and we're going to be presenting this, this information under the College Council, and he's in complete agreement that we need to do a lot of cleaning up, trying to remove, for example, Paulette Perfumo and Jackie Jacobs and Lisa Sugimoto from the Campus Change Committee. So, these are names that either the committees need to simply disappear, the membership needs to be updated, et cetera, and it's going to be a slow process. It goes through shared governance. We all need to agree that certain committees need to disappear perhaps. But a key component that I'll be mentioning is that we need to implement a method by which we ensure the constant updating of our website, not just parts of it, but all of it, especially these college-wide committees. Now, an unintended consequence of my description of this item, at our last meeting, I met with Dr. Salomon Davila. And as I mentioned, the various committees, he reached out to us and informed us that there is a Career Technology Committee that, that he wants to have the Senate be part of. And so, out of this discussion between himself, our Academic Senate Vice President Chris Pilou, and myself, we see that there's funds available under this Career Technology Committee that's going to benefit the entire campus, especially those that are, that are part of the CTE program. Now, that in itself ties into the Policy 6030. Policy 6030, as I mentioned last time, it'll have its first read at our, at our next academic meeting. A key component of this policy is that it will guide the college's comprehensive professional development program and activities in support of the educational master plan. This guidance includes working with the college's constituency groups to identify professional learning needs, serving as a collection point for constituency groups to make training requests, overseeing the work of the Professional Development Implementation Group, approving activities, allocating resources, producing the annual professional development, development calendar, et cetera. So, by having the college approve, or eventually, this policy will come to the board, by approving this, we're going to be able, we will be in compliance with the state, we'll be able to access funds. This is a policy that was, that's taken many hours to develop by staff, management, and faculty, and once again, it'll be the, it'll be a first read this coming Monday. Next item is that, just like you're always, the board is already looking towards the future, so are we. We are, we just finished creating a Senate Breakfast Committee. We're discussing about ways to update our breakfast, annual breakfast at the end of the year. Attendance has been poor. We've, we were in a deficit last year, so we're trying to come up with ways to increase in attendance, whether that may be having a luncheon, moving off campus, I don't know, but the process is beginning to see what we can do to improve attendance. And finally, I'll be putting on the agenda the Dr. Mann's request of including discussion on the Armenian genocide, whether or not we can create classes specifically regarding that matter. It'll have to go through the CI Committee, but nevertheless, the discussion will begin, and we'll see how far we can get with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas.
Thank you, President Brown. I want to, I did put a flyer on your table about the Build Pro Dare grant that we are working with Cal State Northridge, and I want to thank Dr. Levo for bringing up high-impact practices, because this is an opportunity for our students to do world-class undergraduate research with Cal State Northridge. So, we're very pleased about that, and we're going to get the kickoff early next month for this. Second is, I want to congratulate the district on reaching agreement with the Faculty Association contract. That was a big milestone. And I'd like to say, on behalf of the managers, we're really looking forward to finalizing the Memorandum of Understanding that we've been working on for the past six months with the district in order to reach, move forward with the managers as well. Look forward to getting a quick resolution to that. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Carangella.
Good evening, trustees. On behalf of the Classified Senate, we are currently in review of the Board Policy Number 6030, which addresses the Professional Development Program. Today, we met and we discussed it, so we should have our feedback soon. We also met and discussed today and planned the Classified Scholarship, which we plan to award to an employee and also to a student, so that's also coming up on the horizon. And then also, we continue to plan our Classified Day Event, which is pretty much the biggest event that we have during spring, and it coincides directly with the Classified Week that is much-recognized. In addition, we're also finalizing our Town Hall meeting dates, which will allow a forum for classified staff to address any concerns as it relates to the classified matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lewis?
No reports, and no reports from associates.
Trustee Salvage? Trustee Thompson?
Just want to remind everybody again that on, excuse me, May 16th, we're going to have our PCC Foundation Gala, and we would encourage all of you to attend, and if you can, to purchase a table and bring your friends to that event, so, supporting the foundation and supporting our students.
Thank you. Trustee Waugh?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night, Laxta will have an event on the CCAP, so College and Career Access Pathways Program, and Cynthia, Dr. Levo, Dean Davila will be presenting the PCC PUSD Dual Enrollment Model, and we'll also have Compton, the Compton El Camino Early College. Assembly Member Chris Holden will be there to go over the revisions of his new bill, and we are hoping to get all the K-12 and community colleges to come together under Laxta to support this. So, I hope everyone will come. I just heard that San Marino ordered a lot of food, so, they'll all be taking doggy bags home. Also, tomorrow night is Chinese New Year's Eve, and it is the Year of the Ram, so, I want to wish everyone Happy New Year. And I also want to say, thank you, you know, great appreciation to Dr. Miller for his leadership on the legislative days, and Dr. Levo was there, and Dr. Corner wasn't there, but he was certainly, had laid all the groundwork and was behind the scenes. But it was one of the most successful legislative events that I have seen. Thanks.
Beautiful. Dr. Mann? Just a little bit more about the trip to Washington, to the legislative seminar. I think it was successful, it was well-planned, it was well-coordinated, and again, I want to compliment our outstanding students. We had, when we were in the Department of Labor and Department of Education, we heard no one has ever brought students before, and they really liked talking to students. And we were in, Congressman Schiff, our president, was talking, and he says, "Well, I want to hear what the students have to say." And he learned a lot from, he talked with Marshall and, what was the young lady's name? Elena?
Kelly.
Kelly, Elaine was the other one. So, I think the trip was very, very successful, it was very useful, and I think we should really, really try to encourage and try to take our student trustee and maybe another student, because people are very, very interested in hearing from the students, not, not from us. And those of you who know me know that I am not a sports fan, and that I'm not very good with Armenian names, but I would suggest, since Jerry Tarkanian was a coach here, that we should adjourn in his memory.
Yes, Ms. President, I'd also like to ask that the board adjourn in memory of Mr. Justin Chu this evening, the father of Congresswoman Judy Chu, who died last week at 91. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Martin? Okay.
One thing, I went to a meeting a day where Congresswoman Judy Chu spoke, and she was very complimentary about Pasadena City College, both with respect to the Small Business Development Incubator Program that we have here, and also with respect to the work that we're doing, moving toward Memorandum of Understanding for a Veterans Medical Clinic on campus. And so, she shouted out to both, to us for both of those events.
Okay, so, future, proposed future Board Business Meetings date, so, we all know we will be here on Saturday. Isn't that exciting?
I'm excited.
Is here, here?
Where are we meeting, actually? It will be. Where are we going to be, Mary?
G1, the conference.
G1.
Okay, the little conference.
Oldest thing?
Yes, that nice little room where we had our last, some meeting we had over there. Very good. Okay, so, we will be there, starting at 8:30, as you could see on your agenda. Then, so, on the 4th, Wednesday the 4th, is our next business meeting, followed by the 18th, which is, yeah, we will be here on the 18th. And will there be some members of the team, do you know, here on the night of the meeting on the 4th, they will be here that day?
Yes, they are, they are planned to be, the accreditation visiting team, they will be here on the 4th, that's what they tell us.
Okay. So, we have the 18th, and that's about it. Do we have any future agenda items, Board members? No? Okay, so, this meeting is adjourned.
In memory of you.